Three. There we go. You're good.
Okay, good. Good evening, everyone. I will now call to order the April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four City of South Pasadena Library Board of Trustees Meeting. Administrative Secretary Sean Fay, please call the role.
Okay, Minson Meeker.
Here.
Bianca Richards.
Here.
Kenny Gross.
Here.
Annie Chang Long.
Here.
Edward Pearson.
Here.
Thank you.
Wait. Um. In an effort to better manage the business on the agenda, general public comments, if you want to do thirty minutes at the beginning of the agenda. And if there are speakers remaining with queue, they'll be current at the end of the meeting. If you would like to make general public comments for items not listed on the agenda and are under the purview of the library board of trustees, please now raise your hand on Zoom or turn in a speaker card. We have cards from Sally.
No, these are old ones.
Oh, these are old ones. Oh, yeah. Um, is there anyone on Zoom, Sean?
No.
Okay. Yep, there being no one else present to speak, I will now declare the public comment period closed. Um, for reordering or additions or deletions on the agenda. Does anyone want to make any changes?
Nope.
Hearing none, we will continue to the next item. Approval of minutes of the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four Library Board of Trustees Meeting. It's recommended that the board review and consider approval of the minutes. Do you have any public comments on this item?
I move to approve of the. Oh, do we have to close public comments first before I?
No.
Yeah, I moved to approve of the minutes of Thursday month.
Oh, second.
Any other comments or questions on it? You have a motion and a second. Sean, can you take the role?
Sure. Annie Chang Long.
Yes.
Minson Meeker.
Yes.
Kenneth Gross.
I was there to vote.
I think you can abstain.
No. Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, Edward Pearson.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, another item, volunteer recognition event, do you read?
Uh, yeah, so, um. I just wanted us to have an opportunity to talk about the event and while it's fresh in our minds. As you remember, you know, we've made some changes this year to try to simplify the event and maybe reduce the staff workload a little bit. Um, and also to, um. The trustees took a role, a lot of role and responsibility this year as well. And I wanted to give you some, uh, facts and figures. So we counted about thirty-nine people in attendance, including volunteers and council members and staff members. This is fewer people than we had last year. Um, out of the total number of people invited, fifty-three people didn't attend. So numbers are definitely on the decline, um, which is part of the reason that we've talked about reaching out to the volunteers to see what they would like, how they would like to be recognized, what they might like to do. We haven't, uh, tallied all of the expenses yet. But, um, I think it's going to be around two thousand dollars, which is an increase over the previous years, mainly because we're doing a giveaway for them this year, which we haven't done in the past. So from our perspective, it was a good event. We had a lot of good feedback, um, from participants who said they enjoyed it. We had someone specifically say, I'm so glad you didn't have a speaker this year. Um, so for everyone like that, there's probably someone who wishes we had a speaker, but it was interesting that someone, uh, took the time to make that comment specifically. I think from the staff perspective, um. I think there are some things that, uh, we can do internally in terms of improving the way we collect some of the data that we collect, that we collect in order to produce the program. So we're going to look at that, Sean. I have a conversation about that, again, while it's fresh in our minds to see if there are some things we can think about for next year that would be improvements. And then I think for me, I realized that, um. It was what was taking a lot of my time was the graphic design piece. Um, so my thinking is that we might want to outsource that next year. Because it's not that complicated, but it, it does take time, especially if you're not, it's not your specialty. So that, that, that was sort of our, um. Our takeaway was that it was a nice event. People seemed to enjoy it. Thank you all so much for helping. Min was fantastic. She did all of those beautiful flower arrangements and brought them the day before and had her Girl Scouts making little seed bombs, which everybody loved and thought was really fun. And, um, so I want to thank Min and, and everyone that was there helping to set up and clean up and Bianca for placing the order, which was great. That was a huge help to just help somebody else. And, you know, you did such a great job, you know, talking to them and getting her to customize what we wanted. So, um. Just from the staff, a huge thank you to all of you guys. And Annie, you did a great job. Kind of knocked it out of the park with your, the way, what you spoke about. I thought that was really great, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I thought the two of you talking was, was wonderful. I, I just have a question. If we like this look, why don't we just do this?
Keep doing like, keep identity. I mean, we could.
I mean, are people really gonna? I mean, I mean, can't, can't we just?
Yeah, you could.
How much to put in the time to do that?
Yeah, we've never thought about that before. We always, every year.
We could change up the colors a little probably for, if you, if just if one of the different, but I think it was great like that.
I mean, we used to do that at my last job. We had an annual, one of our exhibitions was an annual exhibition and we basically had the same design and did some colorways, changes every year, but it's just visually the same, you know, brand branding.
Right. And then the only thing, and I, and I swear we did it a mistake when I was a past president is I think it would be nice if we introduce the boards and they stand.
Yeah.
And I think I remember when I was a president, one of the times I forgot to introduce people.
I think Annie did you guys, but I totally blew it and didn't do the friends. So thousands.
We all loved it. I thought it was, I thought it was a hit. I plan on coming next year, you know, for sure. This is an event that will be on my calendar. And I just know, I like, we love this infographic here on that, that kind of has tallied all those volunteer hours. All of the, the money that we kind of fundraised. I, I know all of our volunteers from the friends thought that was so special. And I think we're like, you're giving us ideas of, oh, that's just like a, almost a perfect little bookmark or, you know, elevator pitch right there. So I know from our perspective, we just really appreciate that and love the pins. Everyone was talking about the pin. And, yeah, I think everything. And I planted my wildflowers. So I'm excited to, I'll report back maybe next.
Can you do time lapse?
Yeah, okay, there we go.
Every day. Well, you know, the other, the other nice thing about this too, for all of us too, this is a, a little bit easier to, like, we had to go somewhere and quickly whip this out to be impressive to somebody as opposed to, um. You know, a big, you know, you know, thi- thi- this is just, it's just.
Great synopsis.
Yeah. Well, like Kevin said, I love that idea, but we're always like, we have nothing for the friends. Like, we have nothing we can give to the friends about the friends.
It's like a perfect infographic. We're like, we're gonna maybe flip this.
The volunteers didn't even know how much. They were saying like, oh my God, I didn't realize there was this much once I saw it in printing.
Yeah.
No, collectively.
Which would set that like more of an appreciation for them when they got to see the actual numbers. And just like what you were saying is, you know, it's great when you have things that you can reuse. I mean, we were literally thinking some of that it's a perfect bookmark or just information to capture on our website or when someone's asking. So that lifting, you know, while it looks real simple. It, it serves a big purpose, not only in appreciation, but just functionally showing people what we're doing.
And, and it's nice to have everybody's names too.
One of the ideas they did have, I talked to Kathy about was, um, if the board wanted to go on having a subcommittee to help to leave this event in a way that relieves Kathy from being the project manager for this and having to. I think some of these things, you know, we probably could have done a little bit earlier, but obviously, you know, Kathy's juggling a thousand things. So I just wonder like if you have a subcommittee, like Kathy would still, I think you could still give all the input of like, what are the hours? What do they like? What do we want to do? Not want to do? But then maybe if the board wants to just put in a couple more hours, I know I'd be happy to, to be like, no, this is the best idea for the refreshments. Yes, we may, can we get music? Yes, we'll get the speaker. And then Kathy does that. Sounds like a good idea. It, you know, rather than you having to bring it to us, like, there's so many things we can't do because you're the one that's like closest to it, but this is one, it feels a little bit, and we'd be curious to how you feel like if, we could probably start it. I know the Rose Parade starts the day after January first. You know, we could start next month, talking to the friends about, well, it'd be a good idea. What's all the events? What's the timing and things? I just know it's hard for you to track.
I guess the next, I think that's a great idea if you guys want to do that. And I think the next step is to, um, survey the volunteers. So I don't know. And I just assumed that I would work on that, um, in the next week or so. Um, but I don't know if you, you guys want to have more of a role in that and, you know, create a subcommittee and participate in that piece of it. I just figured we would do something kind of quick and easy and get it out there, which is fine. I mean, I'm not suggesting you you need to do it or should do it, but I just, if you want to be involved in that.
Is there any thought as to why our numbers were lower than before? Did we just not get the word out?
Well, I mean, we, you know, we send a, a paper invitation. We call everybody one by one to ask them if they're hoping, you know, plenty to come. I, I think our demographics are changing a little bit. So we have people who work in middle time or have children in their home, you know, taking care of children. Yeah, I, I think, I think people are busy and I think. You know, I, I do, I think it's the demographics and just sort of the changing body of volunteers, you know, when Dorothy Cohen was still alive and you know, there was this kind of hardcore, poor group of people that knew each other and wanted to celebrate and be together. And I think it's a little different now. I think it's a little bit different now.
I mean, I think that's a question for the survey.
Right.
We're gonna send it to every volunteer. If we have an email list of every volunteer to say, why didn't you come? Would you be willing to share with us? In fact, the time didn't work. It wasn't a priority.
I really did just like the simple programming of who you had speak, you know, everyone was kind of under five minutes or less, which like just moved it so smoothly. And for me, the social aspect, I mean, I was running into people here yesterday that like saw me, but we didn't get to say hello and we got to do an introduction here because, you know, it was, it, there was so many people that again, I I see the board of the friends regularly or maybe a, a committee, but seeing everyone all at once, it was like, oh, I don't know half of these people. I ran into, you know, my, the wife of my scout master here in South Pass growing up and who the last person I thought in the world to see. And I turned to them he talked for like ten minutes about how her son was doing, how her husband was doing. So the social aspect was like really great. And I think that that is actually like a really carefree programming when you're kind of, it's kind of soiree part. And I really love that at the beginning. And then at the end, and I thought kind of letting people have that moment before we kind of set up the stage, I thought it just flowed really well. So.
And that was.
I don't know. It worked really well.
I mean, we specifically said, let's just get, let them get together and get to know each other and socialize and, well, maybe in the invitation next year, we can make that clear.
Next year.
That it's, it's, it's a social volunteer recognition event, get to know each other, get to meet maybe. Because a couple of people said that they, they've never met each other because they cross the, you know. And I think the invite had something to that effect, but we could definitely be more.
But yeah, because maybe that's, yeah, yeah.
I think to the effect, like I know maybe three or four board members that, you know, really would have loved to come. And I'm sure some of you are just the workday didn't kind of from permit it or some, or, you know, just that is the one consideration out of the workday or, you know, another one of our board members has a one-year-old and it just. You pick which days you get childcare, you know.
Well, I mean, is it, so would it, would it, would it have been so awful if kids were there?
No, I feel like it's more the mental state of the parent.
Oh, okay, yeah. Even in a parent's. Feel the same. The value of socializing.
But yes, they could, you know.
I have a question about the fifty-three people who weren't able to attend. Are you guys providing this program? Yeah, yes. Um, which again, that's what we had talked about previously, is this idea that for years, you know, fifty, forty, fifty, whatever percent of people of volunteers are not attending. So then they just get nothing, you know. I mean, we might have made a program afterwards. Um, but yes, we're going to put together the program and, uh, um, the pin part and get those out to everybody.
Oh, that's nice. Yeah.
The pin kind of seemed like a social thing too. I, when I was walking around at first, people were walking around trading pins. What do you have? I like that one. So that, I mean, I love this. It was like a Pokemon card kind of.
Yeah, that was the idea, that you can run around and find the one you like. So, yeah, that was the intent. That's why we thought all different.
I think you got great ideas to keep this a really good event. There's always going to be people who can't come. But if you make it more social, if you make it more library celebration, I mean, yes, the volunteer recognition's in there, but it's it's not something that people always grasp right away. So having it more of a celebratory event and then having the recognition as part of it. I mean, I think. It'll, it'll still be really strong.
Uh, Kathy, one of the things I noticed, I'd seen is that there seem to be specific days for National Library Week. There was is that always the case? Because I don't remember seeing that before.
I think so. Well, I think that, um. Like the Freedom to Read Day or whatever, you know, the, yes, they're, they're doing like a little graphic and, and specifically assigning something to a day. I don't know if they've always done that. My guess is they've probably done some of it for some number of years, but.
And then I don't think we'd be able to match somehow up with the one most appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I think that for us, you know, we try to look at getting it close to National Library Week, but like this year, we had to do the proclamation really early because the April Council meeting was canceled. So the timing was a, a little weird, but normally it's all kind of condensed into the proclamation of council and then National Library Week. And again, selecting the date, I think is just tied more to the count, like the community room calendar and what this group says, yeah, I can do that. I can do, you know. So, yeah, I don't know if there's a benefit to, to trying to tie it more closely to the day. I don't know. I mean, the ninth was National Library Workers' Day. So I hit, you know, eight o'clock at night, I was finally sending my email staff and we got new shirts for everybody. And, um, so, yeah, it's a lot going on during the week. So I don't know that it matters that if our event falls on a specific day in there.
I'm happy to help you with the survey, Kathy.
Okay.
So like, I can, I can add that up if you just give me the email addresses and what you're thinking about.
Or, or, or do you want to just, can I just send you? You're really good at the question. Can I just send you like and say, how about this? And then you can fix up the questions for me.
And, yeah, so, I mean, I, I don't know how, if, probably if we can set it up now, it's a general item, but like a subcommittee now to think about next year and take service and something like that, I'd be happy.
Yeah, we want to, if you guys want to, you know, make a, a motion to do that and see if.
Can we do a motion on that?
Well, I guess you're right. It's not really on the agenda. Um, let's just put it on for May.
Yeah. I just thought I'd raise that idea.
And that can give everyone some time to think about whether, I mean, there, you know, realistically, it's not, it's not a big this the Rose Parade, like, you, you know, you want to get started. Yeah, you want to get going and not wait.
But I think like, be able to kind of get the feelers out, like, in the survey of what would you want, like, why didn't you come? And what would you like next year?
Right.
And then we have the whole idea about combining it with the, I think, annual meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't even know if that's still an option.
I think, you know, still like in the mix, should be talking about it. It'll be nice to kind of, as you're, just like what you're saying, it's all very fresh. So at our next Friends Board meeting, kind of having that question, hey, you know, what did you enjoy it? What did you think? I know we, I, we had talked about that at a previous meeting as well. So I know the board isn't like going to be blindsided by that question. Um, and maybe now is kind of a right time to either plant a seed and pick a direction. But I also just separately thought the amount of like refreshments and everything was like perfect. I don't know. I heard, heard in the, in the past, maybe it was a little bit more formal and bigger and a lot of that. But, I mean, I would have, if it was just like this, every single time again, I thought you guys really hit it on the, on the nail.
I won't be surprised if we get feedback that people want to lunch again, like I, people might like to go back to that, but we'll see. We'll see.
So, yeah, we can put that first consideration on the next meeting.
Yeah, okay. So we'll make sure to, to put the, um.
So we can, I mean, that would be good because we can bring the feedback and the survey into that.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much for all the time on that too, Kathy and Sean listening somewhere. Anything else on the volunteer machine? There wasn't light agenda this month and I think Kathy's little bit kind of an update about all this stuff for that in the operation.
Yeah, so, um, and I know you guys haven't had time to look at this, but we'll just, um, run through it. Staffing, uh, we were very fortunate. We thought we were going to be asked to, uh, hold off on filling our second part-time librarian vacancy. But I think that it was decided that it was just too far down the road to, to not go through with it. So we've made an offer, um, to someone who's accepted and I think they're starting, uh, later this month. So we're excited about that. I have not met them, but, um, I'm hearing that, you know, people are excited about the choice. And then we do still have some vacant positions that we are being asked to hold off on. Uh, this fiscal year for sure. And then it'll be part of the, uh, this year of twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five budget discussion. Um, that includes two library aides part-time. Um, it includes one library clerk and it includes a number of substitute librarians in our substitute librarian pool. Um, and they're all pretty. You know, for us, because all we're doing is public service and keeping this building open fifty-eight hours a week. It just takes bodies to do that. So, um, you know, when I'm asked to justify like, well, why do you need these people? I'm like, well, do you want us to be open fifty-eight hours a week? Because if I don't have good people, I can't do it. So. But it's not, you know, it's not our decision, but I, I'm hopeful that in the next fiscal year, um. You know, we'll have an adequate budget for the part-time positions and we'll be able to fill those aid, especially the aides and the clerk, well, and the substitute librarians, really all of them are super important. Um, but in the meantime, we're, we're getting by, um, and it will be great to have that, uh, eighteen-hour-a-week part-time librarian come on board. Um, just an update, the next section is kind of summarizing what we talked about at the last meeting around, um, the policy review project. Um, and it just sort of summarizes that now that we're not taking action. Uh, another, we're doing action item only minutes. We don't always get a lot of information about what we, what we decided. So, uh. What I understood is that we are going to, um, focus on one policy at a time and, and focus on the policies that are the most uh, important for library operations. They're all old, but some are, uh, much more meaningful in terms of everyday operations. So code of conduct is the first, is the first one on the list that we would like to focus on. We talked a lot about the help that trustees can give us. I think there was some talk about a subcommittee, but I think we ended up landing more on, um, just, you know, reaching out to men and to others and asking them to look at things for clarity, for organizational structure, for, you know, best practices, if this look right, uh, because you guys all have a lot of, um, knowledge and expertise. So I think that we, we'll build that into kind of the planning for the review of each of these policies, you know, hey, send it to men on the state or send it to Ed or, or whatever that may be. And, uh, as far as where we are with approaching the code of conduct policy, we just really haven't had time since the March meeting. But I did meet with my two senior staff, Barb and Nada, to talk about the idea of this approach and they think it's a great idea. I think, uh, you know, every, all of the staff are feeling a little frustrated because it doesn't feel good when you set goals that you then can't meet. So I think everyone's excited to say, okay, let's try this and see if we can make more progress. Um, so we are, we'll meet, we already meet regularly, but we're going to specifically, um, carve out time to, to work on this and have conversations about it. So I think what will happen next month is that, um, when we come to the, the meeting, we'll, we'll come with sort of our like sort of a, an overview of that policy and what about it needs to be changed and what it's going to take to make those changes. You know, what, what research do we need to do? What does that timeline look like? Where can you guys help us? Just sort of like a project plan, almost like a, here's how we're going to approach this. So instead of trying to come to you with a completed revised policy, you know, we'll kind of come to you with, here's how we're going to approach this. Here's how we can help to say, here's what the timeline, we hope, will look like. So that's, that is my summary of what we talked about. I didn't know if other people have other thoughts about, uh, what we discussed at that meeting that we missed in this.
Sounds, yeah.
Yeah.
So then in May, we will get the, um, the overview, the action plan.
Yeah.
Like the months and what.
Yes, yeah. I think specific to that specific policy.
Backfalls.
Yeah. So, so, I mean, Barb and Nada and I have already, again, because we work on these and fits and starts, right? So we've already done a, a, some work on it. And so we want to just come back to you guys and say, here's what's been done. Here's what still needs to be done. Here's when we can do it. Here's what you can do, you know, and just try to kind of lay it out so we all have the same action plan. And I, again, I think it's going to be really important to have that accountability from you guys so that we have a monthly standing item that, you know, forces us to talk about this and see where we are. Um, so, yeah, so that's in May. That's what I'm thinking it will look like is sort of, here's our, our plan. Here's what's happened so far with updating this particular policy. And here's how we recommend getting it updated and then we can go from there.
Comments, questions?
I was just going to ask for the code of conduct policy, like leading into the main meeting. Do you guys, assuming your staff know, um, have the subject matter expertise, obviously, but do you need any research help around what other library or other jurisdictions are doing around that? Because like, again, I don't know code of conduct policy, but I'm happy to do the research. Um, that, that's the piece that we've sort of already done. Um, we just, it's left so long now that we don't remember or have to, I have a big stack of stuff, which is the policies from the other places. But I think that, that that's a conversation that it would be either sharing that information with you guys in, in such a way that you could look at it and kind of see what does it look like in other places. I mean, we've already looked at it and said, oh, we wish ours looked like this, you know, this looks like this will be effective or manageable or whatever. Um, so, yeah, we've done some of that research. But again, that's what I'm thinking is if we have kind of a, a, a plan of action, it might include asking one of you guys to do that kind of research, to do that background or, or take those all the way and look at them and let us know what you think about how they compare.
Yeah, I think research is important.
Yeah.
Because you really want to have someone who's thought it through.
Right.
As opposed to throwing out ideas, goes into a policy. Well, that was just our brainstorming.
Right.
And then you, you're not sure you, you captured it.
Right, especially this policy, which is so kind of fraught with, you know.
Right.
You, you, you can't, you don't want to be discriminatory, you know, it's, it's, you just have to be really careful and you don't want to put anything into policy that just have unintended consequences. So, yeah, thinking about it really carefully, which is why this policy is sort of daunting to, to do. But again, I mean, there's many, many library systems with many, many more resources than we have. And so they've already done a lot of the work. Surprisingly, there's different, you know, you would think they would just all be the same, but, um, but there's definitely best practices out there that we can use, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
But then I saw the note about the, I believe, establishing a policy review subcommittee, um, in May too. So
Yeah.
if we want to do that, do we have to do something now to make sure we can do that in May?
No, we can just, we can just put it on the agenda as like a, if you, yeah, you know, i- if you want to take that action, you can, but you can choose not to take it. Yeah, I mean, again, I, I, let's, I think if we look at, um, the action plan that we come up with, we might have a better sense of whether oh, this is good enough, you know, we're going to work on these things together outside of this meeting. And do we need a subcommittee? I mean, we may, but.
No, I just want to make sure we have the option in May because otherwise then it's like we have to wait till June and.
Yeah, no, no, it'll definitely be part of that.
How that, that's like the public knows.
Yeah, 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 definitely. This is just a little, um, update about Olivia's talk to the Qantas Club. Uh, I thought that was great. Um, I think you were there, right?
Really good. Hellbinding. It was, it was so fun.
People love the love of history material.
Yeah, I mean, the idea that there was ostriches, a solar collector, the first, you know, solar powered pump. And these many palm trees, you know, that haven't really been, it just, it's just these odd combination of symbols.
Yeah.
It's really great.
Yeah, so we were excited to be able. Yeah, so we were excited to be able to get out and and connect. Olivia's only regret is that she didn't get her picture taken with Judy Chu. She's really disappointed. Yeah. The app is fully functional and now up again on both stores. So, which is great.
I just, just going back, I I think that was so compelling. I, you know, is that something that other librarians are prepared for? I mean, she's got her material. That's something that can be sort of.
Like that she can.
Take it on.
A little roadshow?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, in a way, that's sort of how it happened. So she she did a presentation at the volunteer recognition event last year. And then someone there asked her to do it for Onyanta. And then someone from, yeah, so then she went to Onyanta and then Kuanis got wind of the Moni Anta and asked her to do Kuanis. So that's sort of how it's working. And ideally, yes, we would love to have. It's something I would love to see is that we have some kind of pre-prepared talks that we can go and do. In my last job, I, yeah, they were ready. And if someone wanted you to talk about this aspect or that aspect, you just pulled it out and you could go and do it. So Olivia is obviously super competent and has a lot of material at her fingertips. So the Qantas folks wanted us to kind of talk about the history of Qantas, which we don't have a lot of information about that. But, yeah, so she can basically take this base presentation and add elements for whatever group it is. So.
Do you guys then have a connection with the South Pass Heritage?
No. The Preservation Foundation? Uh, yes, we, Olivia was on their board for a time, but she is no longer doing that. But yeah, we stay in touch with them. We are in the process of trying to get a memorandum of understanding sign so that we can start to digitize their collections that are up in the attic, you know, one hundred and ten degrees all summer. So that's in, that's on their, it's in their, the ball is in their court right now. And we do follow up and periodically say, hey, how's that going? But we also get busy and so are kind of waiting for them to do that. So, yeah, we do have a relationship with them. You know, we have a, we have a different mission, but there's definitely overlap there. Yeah. It it seems that we could have a lot of.
Yeah.
Partnership versus that we could do more, but it sort of depends on the other.
Yes, as well. So.
Oh, sorry.
I was going to ask about the school.
But I think it's first grade, they do a whole curriculum on where they live. So they start with like the city, the county, the state.
Come to the library too.
Yeah, I mean, we have all of that pre-prepared, you know, we have all the, you know, standard curriculum for the different grades and have material prepared for those things. So if you go on our website under, it's under, probably under the children's page, you know, all kinds of little study aids and packages that give them, you know, first-person resources and.
Do they do local history?
I think it's fourth grade that does, like local, like local history. And I don't know what grades some grades do. They do the missions. I don't remember what grade that is, but yeah, yeah.
Just did it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so. Yes, I mean, those children's services librarians know about all this. I I do not know. I'm not up to speed, but they know what the curriculum is and they know what the standard for stuff is and they definitely are prepared for that. In terms of partnering with the schools on the local history piece, it's what we're focused on now is this partnership to get some of their material digitized.
Yeah.
Yeah. But yes, we have good relationships with the schools and and the teachers definitely do send the kids to us for that stuff. I just wanted to highlight, because we often talk about safety and security issues here, that the city, they have an interdepartmental kind of safety team and Sean has been our representative on that team for some time. It has sort of ebb and flowed over the years in terms of how active it is, how productive it is, but it's been really great lately. We have really strong leadership in our national services division now and the human resources risk management division. So we're seeing a lot of great progress. So that team underwent some training as a team, you know, first aid, CPR and all of that. And then in addition, working together with human resources risk management, we now have first aid kits on both floors that are being stocked by an outside vendor versus us trying to know what we can buy and what we shouldn't buy. And in fact, they came and said, you can't have those pills or you know what I mean? Like now it's official and and they're handling it. We don't have to worry about our, is our antibiotic cream expired? So that's a huge benefit, right, to have this centralized. And they also are centralizing the AED units. So we've had AED units for a long, long time, but they're making sure that the city has them everywhere, not just because the library, you know, like we got them of our own accord, but like, I don't know if the recreation building at Orange Grove has them. So now the city safety team is making sure that that's happening in all the city. So that's great. And we really appreciate that. And it's a big help for us. I did want to also, yeah, can I ask a question about the safety committee? I was just curious if, you know, I work for Los Angeles County and LA County Libraries, carry Narcan, which reverses fentanyl overdoses and like all the library staff have been trained. And I was just curious if the city, is that something that's been considered for the safety committee? They haven't talked, to my knowledge, they haven't talked about it. That's something I could ask them to talk about. Yeah, we've just never talked about it with PD. Obviously, PD and fire are all equipped. We it has not been an issue that we would, you know.
Yeah.
But it could be, it could be.
Yeah.
I think the other thing here in South Pass is that the response time is so fast from public safety that you know, if if someone here is having an overdose and we call, fire will be here in two minutes, three minutes. So I don't, I maybe it's not necessary, but that's definitely something that they should talk about and think about. Yeah.
Yeah, I worked with County Public Health and Department of Health Services and they give out free kits and they do free trainings for local municipalities and schools and everywhere. And they have like really short, two-minute training videos. So just wanted to share.
Yeah, let me ask Sean to bring that up with them. Yeah, it's a piece of mind, I think, for staff to.
Any more feedback?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Training, people being trained.
Right. Yeah, I mean, when they, I mean, it's not that long ago that all the PD and, you know, that everybody that they were equipped with it, maybe two years ago. And at that time, I did think, oh, I wonder if we should do that yet, but we we just haven't. But, um, yeah, let me ask Sean.
Yeah, you you want to make sure you don't assume a duty.
This is the thing.
Makes staff feel like they have to do something.
There's definitely a sensitivity in library staff that I'm not a medical professional. I already am dealing with, you know, the heart attacks and the cardiac arrests and you know, I I think there is a sensitivity to how much, what we're being asked to do and whether we're equipped. But in this case, this is something where you know, you would get the adequate training, you would be equipped, but that's definitely a consideration. For sure.
I know that this, I think this kind of connects, which I, which I didn't say earlier, I I did have a question with like the library administrative policy review project. And that last meeting, you had mentioned that there was some questions about like emergency protocol of who has the say to close down the library, say when you lose power for thirty minutes or something serious happens. I don't know. I think that there are maybe other people that make that decision that need to be involved, but I'm not sure if the interdepartmental safety committee is an appropriate place to maybe take some pressure off of your individual staff and allow this interdepartmental thing to realize that there is a gap here and hey, if there's an emergency at the library, I'm not exactly sure if I have the authority to say shut the doors or everyone needs to leave. And to me, that seems like a very big priority under protocol that I think is less about the groundwork that you have to do and maybe more of the groundwork of the city clarifying what that chain of command looks like for the safety of your staff and the patrons of the library. So maybe that's an appropriate place to go that more than just the library board here should be thinking about it, but also the the members of the interdepartmental safety committee perhaps.
Yeah, that's a good thought. Hey, any other questions on that one? I did want to share, this is super exciting for us, that the public works department has filled their facilities and park supervisor position, which is obviously a huge one for us. Ray Barlow is who they hired and he he just started a couple of weeks ago, but we've already had him here on site and done a really thorough walkthrough inside and outside of the building to talk about kind of our ongoing issues, the issues that we get planned to fix and the funding that we didn't get and, you know, just kind of giving him the big picture. So that's really exciting. And he's already, you know, we've been asking for probably since, well, since COVID was happening to have these light fixtures cleaned and the bulbs replaced and it, you know, we haven't been able to get interaction on that. And he's like, we're doing it. I'm gonna, you know, he's on it. So it's really exciting to have. You know, they just need adequate staffing levels to to do the things they need to do. So no, no criticism on the the staff that have been working so hard while they have all these vacancies, but it's just exciting to have someone in that position who seems really, really great and was very receptive, interested, knowledgeable. Really fantastic. So that is good for us. We'll hopefully see some progress on the roof and our leaks and things like that. Quickly, the sewing South Pasadena Grant, which was the California State Library Grant that Olivia and Alexis got. That programming is kind of winding down. On the sixteenth of April, we have one more program that focuses on indigenous people's use of flora and fauna and things of that nature. The Repair Cafe is on April twentieth and that will entail volunteers doing repair work of different types for people to come for free and do that. The Ed Begley event was a lot of fun. I think John was there, right?
Great.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. I thought he was really a pleasure to work with and people seem to really enjoy getting to meet him and shake his hand. So that was a big success. Teen Advisory Board is active. They've been doing a lot of, the teens have been doing a lot of volunteer work for us. We now they have a sign up, we have a sign up site where they can just go and, you know, we can put in, we need help setting up chairs on this day, we need help with this on that day. And they just go in there and sign themselves up. So that's really great. I think that teen advisory board has kind of changed over, you know, we we started it maybe in twenty eighteen. And I think the focus maybe goes on them planning programs for other teens. And that was not very successful, you know, teens didn't come to the programs that were planned. So we've sort of shifted a little bit to continuing to have them do some kinds of programming, but they're doing a lot of volunteer work for us, which is really great. So they're doing this open mic night. So we'll see if they come and if they have fun. We have our next national poetry, our next poetry writing workshop with our poet laureate, Ron Fertchi. That was really well attended the first time. I think it's already quote unquote sold out. I think all the spots were taken, but if people are interested, they should definitely sign up for the waiting list because people will cancel or whatever. But we're excited about that because it was really well attended. So it's clearly meeting, you know, filling a void in our community. The Los Angeles Clarinet Choir Concert was really fun. I don't know if any, but any of you were there for that? It was, oh, yeah, Ed, you came.
It was fun.
It was great, right?
It was really concert.
Very loud. It was like, it was like, you know, yeah, really loud. And so then the people in the library are complaining because it's too loud. It's always a thing when we try to do programming like that when the library is open, but it was great. I thought it was a lot of fun and people seemed to really enjoy it. National Library Week, we've already talked about that. We know all about that. I think I sent you emails about that. I just wanted to share also that Olivia is involved with the California Library Association and the number of their subcommittees. And they do their big conferences normally in the fall. I think it's in Pasadena this year, so hopefully staff will be able to participate. But they do a kind of a spring mini-conference thing where they do little things at sites all over the state. So Olivia is hosting this zine workshop where they're going to learn about zines from a librarian from Los Angeles Public Library who established their zine library and then also have a little fun at the same time. So great to see the staff doing, you know, connecting with the professionals in our field. And then I just attached since staffing is on the list, I thought I would just attach the org chart. In case you have any questions, it gives you a little bit of a visual view of what's vacant and what's going on. So that's just for your information if you have questions.
I was wondering, just when you were talking about the vacancies, do you know how we compare to other libraries on like a per-user basis, staff ratio?
It's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head, but I can definitely access that data.
Just some better makes it clear for the budget, you know, because I'm not there. It's like, I feel like you need a lot of help and I'm not there like relatives to like what we're asking. Are we asking for more than we have or are we making do with us? I feel like we're making do with us. So I think that would help make the case for.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I mean, I I would love, I always would like to spend more time looking at that data that gets, you know, we go to all this trouble to collect all this data and submit it to the database, the state database, the national database.
Oh.
Yeah, every year we submit a huge amount of data to the state library. They collect the data. It's all under the Institute for Museum and Library Services, so it's under the federal level. So you basically have a source of data for every library in the state and it tracks lots and lots of different data points, you know, budgeting, staffing, collections, usage, lots of stuff. The only issue with it that is the caveat that people have to be aware of is that it's people are self-reporting. So sometimes you can see like when you're looking at the data, you'll see these crazy outliers and then you just know, okay, they didn't know what they were doing. Put it in, they didn't do it right. You know, they didn't follow the didn't read the description of what this data is supposed to be. So you have to take a little bit with a grain of salt because it's people are reporting on themselves. But it's really interesting. And so, yeah, we can definitely look at that. And I I wish I had the time. I would do it all the time. I love it.
Well, didn't the consultants, when we did the strategic planning, I thought the consultants.
They did like.
Didn't they show a slide where they had the comparison?
They did. They did.
Different libraries. Remember they, remember we questioned the other things?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we, I think Kenny was questioning some of the other libraries.
Yeah, that that I I remember they got a lot of criticism on that slide from Diana. I remember Diana was, yeah, this is not, you need to use a different, a different set of data or something. But yeah, that was very superficial.
Yes.
Use of that data, I think.
Yeah.
And I think that if we were doing it, like we might choose different libraries to compare ourselves to. You know, not maybe just based on size, but based on what we know about the communities, you know? So I think that I think we can probably have a more meaningful.
Yeah.
Attack on that, then maybe they could. And I think they were hitting that at a pretty superficial level. I know that Monterey, California is a they decided that we were in their kind of pool of comparable libraries. So they've been doing a lot of additional outreach, asking for this information, that information. So again, I think if you look at the list, you know, we might not think off the top of our heads, oh, we should compare ourselves to Monterey, you know, but there's, you can look at it by size, by, you know, budget, by per capita, this, that. So I think we can get in there. So, yeah, I'm happy to to do that and.
I'm not being immediate, but I just think it's going to help.
No, I would, yeah, exactly. And I would love to. I mean, there's so much great information in there that would be really fun to bring to you guys.
Question on the org chart, either weekend in charge librarian is vacant. So how how do you pick your weekend in charge librarians? And is that sort of like you just say, well, you get, you get a weekend day today?
No, so that's a really good question and it's it's something that it's hard sometimes. People don't understand how we staff, how we use our our substitute librarians and the weekend in charge librarians. So basically, we might have two weekend in charge librarians that are entitled or able to work twenty-eight hours a week, but we don't need that many hours. Like we need a certain. Like, we need a certain set amount of hours and it just so happens that right now, the one person that we have hired can do all those hours. So if she were quit or her schedule were to change, we would need to fill that second position. But and we originally did fill both the the person, one of the persons did not, um, we let him go prior to his, during his probationary period. But again, since the person that we have is fantastic and can cover all those hours. Yeah, but it is, we, you know, we keep it on the books because theoretically may need a second person. Not everybody wants to work Saturday and Sunday.
Right, because their hours might be spread over a weekday and a weekend and then they wouldn't have that weekend.
Right, and 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 part of the thing with with this job too is that, uh, I mean, let's think, what, how many hours do we need? I mean, we basically need Saturday, ten to six, not, so nine to six. Um, and then Sunday, like twelve to five, so you we, and we don't necessarily have other hours to give those people, right? So if you hire two people, you only have so many hours to split between them. Some people don't want, so a few hours. So it's just this kind of, it's a little bit of a.
It works out, the way it is, right?
Right, and the substitute pool is the same, like, we have twelve positions, but they don't, we don't calculate that by twelve people, it's like eighteen hours a week, you know? Some of them work three hours once a month, some of them work, you know, it it's it's not so much about the number of people, it's about a set number of hours that we know we have to fill in order to cover.
It's an art, not a science.
It is, and it's it's always uh to explain it to finance and management services, you know, they see twelve people and oh my gosh, and they do the math, I'm like, no, no, don't do the math. You really have to use, here's, here's how many. Yeah, it's just tricky because it's different, I think, than other, I don't think other departments have it quite like that, because even community services that has the recreation leaders, um they they work eighteen hours a week, you know, I mean, you need a certain number, but they all, they're not working once in a blue moon, you know, a substitute librarian pool is typically I mean, initially, originally, it really was like subs, so someone would call out sick and you would have this pool of people that you could call in. Since we've lost staff over the years, a lot of the substitute librarians are working with a regular schedule. Just maybe not eighteen hours. So it's sort of in in a state of a little bit of flux, which I am looking at that with management services to think about those part-time vacations and do they make sense and should we be doing that differently? What else? Did I answer whatever question I remember? Other questions about that? From that, that's it. Yeah, okay.
Library operations update, if you want to fill with a quarterly budget update.
Yeah, so um I actually ran the report just to date rather than literally through the end of the quarter, because I thought we're so close to the end of the year that it's kind of meaningful to just see where we actually are. So just be aware of that, that this is um not just through March the first, it's through early April. Um, and basically, uh, you know, we're on track uh to spend the money that we've been um been, you know, allocated. Um I think that we're gonna have some surplus in both uh part-time and full-time budgets. And and for part-time, that's really an indication of vacancies, I think, you know? Um, the reason that we have money leftovers was we don't have the people working. And that that budget is impacted by the recent adoption of the new uh MOU with the Part-Time Employees Association and some of the salary increases that happened there. I'm still waiting to see what that looks like. I didn't put it in your pocket, but um, I keep track of our monthly uh total like cost of part-time salaries. And for for years, it had been kind of averaging around twelve thousand five hundred dollars a month or something like that. Um, but then they approved the new um MOU and it was retroactive pay back to October. So there was a huge jump in one pay period. And then it went back down to what I would call normal and then another big jump, which I think is what we're going to do, a correction that they made to that MOU and again, retroactive pay. So I'm still trying, I'm still waiting to see how these new MOUs are gonna actually impact how much it costs us on a monthly basis. And I think it will be more because the uh librarian, part-time librarian, sub-librarians got like a twenty-six percent uh step increase or increase to their to their wage. So I think it will have an impact, um, but I can't quite see what it is yet. Because I just need to wait till it evens out and all the retroactive stuff has finished. Um, but we, sorry, did you have a question?
Question, over overtime is almost zero. Is that because you have such a big pool, you can pull part-time employees in and not have to have uh full-time work overtime?
Oh, overtime. Yeah, we've never had a tradition of doing overtime. We've never been approved to do overtime. I think that um very occasionally you know, there there'll be an event or something. I mean, staff just uh.
If you have enough people to pull in on regular hours, so you don't have to pay overtime.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. I mean, we just cover when we have that, you know.
Do people clock in and clock out?
Uh, no, we've had two different time clock systems over the last several years and they've both gone by the wayside. So now we just keep manual time sheets.
I mean, how would they main- maintain? I mean, I do a lot of uh employer defense, all these original hours, a lot of original hours, sexual harassment and it's the, you know, it's when there aren't time cards.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, so we um the way that it works is the different, different part-timers have different supervisors who are preparing schedules, so um, Nada does the schedules for the, all the part-time and substitute librarians and Daryl does the schedules for all the aides and clerks. And um, you know, those are shared and published and then if people call out sick or late, I mean, we we just know that people are supposed to report if they're late, they you know, they send it to an email address that we all see. Um, they have to do time, move the class and.
Did we, I mean, do we consider having that again, a time clock, whether it's through an app or do some other?
It was in not to criticize, but um the first time around, it was very poorly implemented and it was not at all in touch with reality of how various departments work. So if my staff are on the first floor, stocking out for their ten-minute break, by the time they get upstairs to the break room and some customer has stopped them on the way and spent five minutes talking to them, they now get a two-minute break and they have to then spend a minute getting down to check back in, like it just.
Well, you're not supposed to clock out for the the ten-minute breaks, you don't clock anything.
Well, lunches, I mean, you know what I mean, like, it's, it's just, it, and for public works also, it's just really um if we're not like a I don't know, it it was not a good fit for our operations. It was very frustrating and uh and again, the whole rollout was not, wasn't all about. So then they tried another time clock and I I don't know exactly what happened with that. I think that it was similar, it was just not working out, so they it just, it's sitting on the wall down there. But yes, I think the intent, I I believe, is to to um automate some of the stuff because we literally do paper.
And I think we should budget a little bit. I think it just visually doesn't look good if there ever was a claim and then you know, discovery, so you guys don't even budget for it and somebody says they're working it, just even if you don't, the policy.
So you're talking about like the overtime budget that
It is zero.
That there should be a little something in it. Yeah, I, that's, that's not something anyone has ever.
And for timekeeping, there's a best, there's a best practice out there. You just have to file it. Because I'm sure li- other libraries have had this, haven't had the issue that Kenny's talking.
Do we have to follow the city with any system?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we have nothing to do with it. No, no, no.
So the, we're waiting like if the city was implemented.
Paper? Are they still doing paper then? The city?
They do paper. I think that um the, after the last uh version, the last company time clock that we ended up not using, um, my understanding was that with our existing financial system, there's a a module for you know, time clock payroll, all that's, obviously payroll, but like a time clock piece. And that at some point that will be explored, but I think it's just staff capacity. Um, and having the time to take on such a big project, we've already failed twice because I believe, in my opinion, not planning adequately for the amount of staff time that it would take to successfully implement an information technology project of that scope. So, you know, don't, we don't do that again. Like, yes, we need to, the city needs to do it, but I think they're probably trying to be thoughtful about about doing it in a way that is successful. Let's say twice, not once. So, yeah, it's very archaic. It's very archaic. And and yes, who knows? I mean, I'm not knowledgeable, but you would think that HR, finances, management probably do have a sense of that they're, we're making, like, putting ourselves in a position where we might be liable because we are doing things.
If if an employer doesn't maintain um time records, adequate time records, the presumption is the employee did work overtime. It's not necessarily a presumption proven, they're alleging it, but if we don't have records.
But but you do, you do collect time cards, they just happen to be handwritten.
Yeah, they're just.
Okay, so there are records.
Yeah, we do time cards and they and they're signed and scanned and processed. They're there, but yeah, it's, it's, it's um anytime you're doing everything by hand, there's a chance that something was could be missed or.
Computer-based timekeeping can be difficult to roll out.
Yeah, it takes a lot of planning and and I think, again, in my experience, uh, the people that are doing it have to at least talk to the departments about how they're, how they operate um to make sure that whatever's being implement, implemented actually makes sense. I mean, it would the the way that they had it set up before was not at all conducive to, it was terrible. It just didn't fit for us at all and it really caused a ton of extra work correcting, which, I mean, the whole point of doing it is so that, you know, now you've got this you're fixing all the mistakes, you're manually overwriting what was supposed to be the automated, you know, factual check-in time. So i- if they do it, if they do it, when they do it, I can't even say it because I know that's like, it's, you know, obviously needs to happen. But um, I just, we just want them to do it correctly. Um, so those are the main, let's see, what else uh that I I need write up. Um, I guess that I would say, I mean, you guys know that there's been a lot of um questions about the city's budget, the mid-year adjustments, um and this sort of sense of, whoa, slow down, don't be careful, we don't know what's happening. So it normally come to pass that City Council asks us to, you know, pull back spending for this fiscal year. I have no idea, but um if that were to happen, there are a couple of places where our department has identified that we can forego or you know, save a little bit of money. And one is the um exterior book drops. Uh, if we don't do that, that's about fifteen thousand dollars and frankly, we're that's not gonna happen even if this year, this fiscal year anyway, because it's it's too late and it's gonna require a whole bunch of concrete work and we don't have public works hasn't been able to help us with that. So it's not gonna happen this year anyway. So basically, we're gonna save the city fifteen thousand dollars this year that we will not spend. But for our budget, because we're, it's pretty tight and it's, there's not a lot of, you know, cushion. We we spend it and we're on track to spend, you know, spend all the book money, to spend all the money on periodicals, to spend all the money. But there, um, you know, there'll be little drips and drops left over in various accounts that might add up to, you know, five or ten thousand dollars, but essentially, we're on track to to spend all our money.
I have a question. I guess it's up to the city, um, but I mean, if we're gonna have salary savings as well, so certain preventative expenses, would you mean if it's a priority, like, it's offset by your
Things are, do they consider them to different parts?
They consider them to different parts.
Yeah, they don't like to, yeah, they don't. Because I think that for them, I mean, that the salary savings are such a big part of that, for citywide, for the the to mix it up with the maintenance and operations would be probably just way too hard. So, yeah, they keep those separate. And then, uh, yeah, so does anybody have any questions about the actual um, the actual reports? I think that it's, I don't think there's really anything. I mean, again, you'll remember there are some places where the percent available is, um, you know, like we're, it looks like maybe we're underspent for where we are in the fiscal year. It looks like we're overspent. That can have to do with maybe the funds are encumbered at the beginning of the year, so they're not available, but we're still sending them. Or it's something where, for example, if you look under um the capital improvement, the capital outlay stuff, like uh on the second page, um, the machinery and equipment line item, that's forty-nine thousand dollars, that includes the um book drop. And then what's left is for the teen room and we fully intend to spend that by the end of the year, but it's just, it looks funny because it's like, well, you haven't spent it, why is it you know, all still available. So there are some little things like that that may look like, um, that may raise questions for you, but those are generally the explanations. Either it's a cost that happens all upfront, it's funds that were encumbered all upfront, or we're spending it now. That's sort of where we are.
Final question, I think, regarding an exception for the budget process.
Yeah, so as you guys know, um the Board of Trustees does have uh, some powers and duties related to the library's budget, which is to um review and submit an annual operating budget to the city manager. So in practice, the way that that has happened is that the staff have prepared a budget um and discussed it with you guys and had a conversation and maybe may or may not have gotten input that they acted on. But I think that um I I think that I need to wait a little bit longer before I bring you that information because we have a council meeting next week, we have a special joint finance study session. So so I've already worked on um a proposed budget for the library for next fiscal year, but that hasn't even been shared, you know, with council or or finance commission. So I'm thinking that we'll look at that more closely in May. But basically, um I think that the, there's a sense that the city needs to be very visually conservative. I don't think we're gonna be asking for any big increases or, you know, something big um next year. I think we're probably gonna try to keep a pretty flat budget and that that's what will be palatable to um to the city council. Uh, so with that said, um, we actually, I think, will um have a little boost on the operation and maintenance side because if we're not that forty-nine thousand dollars that we have budgeted in capital outlay this year, we don't won't need that again for capital outlay the next year. So that allows us, as long as our bottom line stays kind of the same, we're basically able to kind of wiggle money between that capital outlay and into um operations. So, for example, I think I've asked for a little bit more in the book budget and a little bit more in the ebook budget. Um, and are, I'm able to do that because we don't need that much of the capital budgets next year. But it's gonna look very much like the budget we have now, you know, that that's, it's, it's not going to be um anything radically different than the budget we've had over the last many years. The staffing piece, the library staff don't really um come up with those numbers. Uh, finance does that, but again, with the complication of our substitute librarian pool and and whatnot, we have to kind of give them that information and help them to come to the right numbers, but they do all the calculating. So I don't, I don't know yet what that's gonna look like, but I do anticipate it will be an increase on the staffing side because uh we do have a cost, uh, cost of living increase still at first and um and, yeah, those part-time salaries have have gone up a bit. So that's really it. Uh, there's lots of opportunities. Again, April seventeenth, uh, next week, there's a special joint meeting of the City Council and the Finance Commission. They're going to be um looking at short-term, long-term issues, talking about the the budget for the next year um, and doing some kind of educational stuff around personnel and how that all works in the public sector. But that's on the seventeenth and then on the twenty-fourth, uh, there's another special joint meeting with the Council and Finance Commission um, to talk about uh the lighting and landscape maintenance district, which is I can tell you about that offline if you wanna know, it's a whole thing. Um, and the capital improvement program, which will be a good discussion um and interesting. We have a lot of obviously capital issues in our building and um most of those things are captured in the capital improvement um, program, but there's always the question of, so they're there, but they may not be funded yet. And you guys will remember, we put a whole bunch of things. And you guys will remember, we put a whole bunch of things into the program, the capital improvement program, hoping to get the funding from state, um, that would then be matched by the city. So there is some funding, but there's like not enough funding to do the whole roof, or there's not, you know, we kind of have to revisit this and figure out what's realistic and how can we fund these things. So it'll be a good, um, conversation on that night about the capital improvement program. And that's really, that's really it. Oh, I did make a note about special tax revenue. So just to remind everybody of the way that works, we will see an increase likely in the special tax revenue based on the consumer price index increase. Um, but that doesn't necessarily correlate to a, a direct increase in the library's budget. The, the, the special tax is a part of the library's budget, and it's a chunk of the library's budget. Um, but the city still provides the, the bulk of the library's budget. And the city has to provide a certain amount in order to collect the special tax, but they exceed that by a large amount. So the only time that like an increase in the special tax would actually literally be an increase to all their operating budget would be somehow the city was not meeting that base requirement, but, but they are. Last year, they, um, they were like six hundred thousand dollars, uh, budgeted, six hundred thousand dollars more for the library than that base required amount. So we will see a little bit more money, I think, with the cost of, um, with the staffing costs going up, I think that any increase in that, um, special tax, it's not going, I think the special tax will continue to be a smaller percentage of the whole budget. Like, it used to be around twenty percent of the budget, library's budget, and this last year it was about eighteen percent of the library's budget. And I think that that's going to continue to kind of trend that way, that it'll be a smaller part of the library's budget as those staffing costs increase. So, we'll see, uh, what that looks like. I don't know what the, what the expectation is for the consumer price index this year. I haven't been paying attention, but, um, but that's that. Um, if you have any questions about that process or any concerns, again, I will, on, in May, I'll, um, I'll talk to the finance director and the city manager, but I, I think I'll be able to bring you guys, you know, what I'm proposing and requesting, so that you can take a look at that and and, and see what we're, what we're thinking.
I have a question about like that process and sequencing, just given everything that's happening, is it better to wait until June? I guess I just wonder, like, because when I'm reading this, it sounds like we have to review and submit an annual operating budget to the city manager, so I don't know if there's like a specific deadline to do that, but it just seems like if you submit something in May, and then there's other things that happen that require you to like revise your budget, does it have to still come back to us to review and approve again? So just wondering if like sequencing, if that sends to wait.
So that, yeah, that's a good question, and, and I don't think that that is, um, there's no direction specifically around that, but in practice, it has not been that you're submitting like a final, final, you, you know, you're not putting like a final approval on something and submitting it. You're participating in the, the process of deciding what it should look like, and then yes, it's going to the city and it might get tweaked, and then I would come back and tell you, oh, you know what, this is what happened, they did this. Um, so, yeah, it's not so much like you're literally presenting with a final budget. So I would love to, I would like to, if it's appropriate, and again, we'll see what happens at these upcoming meetings, but if it's appropriate and possible, I would want to share it with you in May, so that I can go back and say, the board looked at the budget and they're okay with it. Yes, so can I come?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
We really only have two meetings before.
Yeah, I mean, the June meeting is too late, right? I mean, by the June meeting, the, yeah, it's already, yeah. So it's really, and I think in previous years, it's been like this, maybe we had kind of a high-level discussion in April, and then it's May where we're finally like, okay, I've got something that I can actually show you. Again, I think that some of these discussions that have been happening at the Finance Commission and at the council level, um, need to come, reach their end points, so that we get that direction, the direction, if the direction is you, you need to cut your budget by this percentage, then that's going to change what I've already put together and submitted. So my thinking is that by May, whatever I have will include any direction we brought in from, from council.
So when we get direction back from council, and worst-case scenario, you know, like if there's, has to be significant reductions, do we still have a chance to advocate for why we think that should not be the case before, like, just with the timing of our meeting, will there still be one way to do that?
Yeah, yeah.
I feel like there was times in the past where we write and wrote letters because there was every, like, a expectation we were going to reduce staff or something, definitely that happened one year.
You mean, like, wasn't it maybe the UUT?
Yeah, yeah. To, to council to say, like, there was a specific message that we tried to build a budget process.
I mean, it's, it's, it's always very confusing for everyone, because this body has a very different uh, charge, and, you know, no other commissions are delving into the department's budget.
Yeah.
Um, so it's a little confusing, and I don't even quite know, like, how, how would what form would that advocacy take, you know? Is it, you take, you take a motion that says such and such and such, and not get shared, I don't know. But yes, I mean, I think that, um, it, it's, I, I don't think there's going to be draconian demands coming from council. Um, I think that our budget is pretty lean already. I mean, you could cut our book budget by ten thousand dollars, but is that really going to make a difference? It's really staffing. And if you're talking about staffing, then again, you're talking about hours, you're talking about, um, a community that pays a tax because they want the library open, and they think that I'm paying for it already, and they don't realize that you only pay this little piece of it. But I think that, you know, it's, I think that the library is in a fairly good place in terms of what's happening with our budget. We don't have a lot of big extraneous projects or special requests that that are happening. It's really just, we need to barely operate, you know, and do, and do what we can with what we have, so, um, but yes, I mean, if, if if we get instruction that, you know, we need to make cuts, or, um, that, those will be conversations that we have to have staff and the executive team at the staff level and you guys as well.
There are questions or thoughts on the budget? Um, so communication, um, I guess I'll go first for board president communication. So thank you again to Sean and you for the event and, um, how much time it takes to put that together on the, so everything else. Um, and, um, I think we haven't talked about summer programming yet, but I know there's so many things we're asking you to talk about, but I know, like, summer's coming up, and by the next meeting, you know, just to have a preview of what that is, I you know, um, love to be able to help and if there's anything that we can do to publicize about the events or, you know, community support for things.
Yeah, there, the team is, um, still working on it. I mean, the, the events are all scheduled, but the publicity is not out yet. Um, they'll be doing their classroom visits, um, I don't know what weeks, there's usually a couple of weeks where they're doing the classroom visits to get everybody psyched up about the summer reading program. Um, but, yeah, all that publicity is remains to come out. We're in the process of, um, take applications for the teen volunteers or do uh, the twelfth, I think that's the last day, so then they have interviews happening the next week, so everything's in, in progress. Um, the first event, the first wonderful Wednesday is going to be uh, fun, I think that we're going to, just, just because I happen to know about this, I'll tell you about it. Um, I can't remember the date, June, early June, um, we're going to have the, um, Bob Baker Marionette Theater, and, um, we're going to get like a little ice cream truck or a little ice cream stand, so it'll be a lot of fun to like kick off. And I know that the mayor wants to participate, so we'll probably do some, you know, meet your mayor, meet your council members, something like that, so that elected officials who want to be there and enjoy it can come, but I think it'll be fun for the, you know, whenever there's free, free food, um, it'll be a big hit. So I think, yeah, we're on track for summer reading, um, we've just been, uh, I think we've been a little bit behind with a brand-new children's librarian and, uh, that vacancy, you know, normally we would have have already ordered all the T-shirts in like December, but we wasn't even here yet, so I think we're, we're catching up a little bit, but everything is in order. So, yeah, I can see what they have ready to share. They, I would think by the May meeting, they'll be fully ready to publicize and share everything.
Thank you. Annie, any communication?
Oh, yeah, just that I, I'm sorry, I missed, uh, the event on the night, just, uh, was it, I lost it on my radios, they weren't, I'm, because I've been here in the past and it's really enjoyable, um, so.
Thank you.
Oh, um, I echo Annie and thanking Kathy and Sean for all their amazing work on the event, and I also couldn't attend because of the work conflict. Um, but Annie sent me a picture and it's really lovely. So just thanking everyone, including Bianca and everyone who brought the food, so thank you, guys. And I brought extra seed bombs from my Girl Scout troops for all of you, if you would like them.
And I will share, just, you reminded me, we did have, um, someone taking photographs, so when I get those, I'll share those. Hopefully we get some nice ones, yeah.
I think took a lot of photos.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think the, any, um, I used to be a caterer, and every time we did an event, we always did a debriefing, I think debriefings are great, so I would always encourage that whenever we do anything that we do a debriefing, because you just immediately think, okay, what went right, what couldn't go so right, so. But, yeah, that's all I have.
Um, I did sign up, or had the library sign up for me to attend the Serving with a Purpose Conference, which is in May, and I think there'll be some friends, people there, too. I was, you know, just, and I reported this last year, I was kind of disappointed. They, the focus seemed to be on the fact, we've done this for ten years and we're going to congratulate ourselves for that. This one seems to have a focus about fundraising for capital projects, which seemed right up our alley. So I think it's important that I be there, and it's not until May, and you can still sign up if anybody else wants to go.
Thank you.
Yeah, just let us know, let Sean know.
I think we're going to council liaison updates, yeah, to communication.
Communications, really quickly. Uh, so, uh, Monday, we have a council meeting, and then three Wednesdays in a row, we have council meetings. Monday's meeting is a kickoff discussion on a ballot initiative for the voters to consider relaxing the forty-five-foot height limit on buildings in South Pasadena. It was a voter enacted initiative a long time ago. Uh, it interferes with the development and the density and achieving the densities that we need to achieve to create affordable housing opportunities. So part of this is a state mandate in a housing element, where we've committed to ask the voters to allow buildings to exceed forty-five feet for the purpose of housing. I, I think that's the way the voter initiative is going to be crafted. Coming out of Monday will not be an initiative itself, it'll be direction to staff to create an initiative. So it's really just the beginning, a kickoff discussion. And then eventually that, uh, will be put on the ballot by the council.
For November, would that be?
It'll be on the November, well, we have to do it before December twenty twenty-four, so logically November. So that's Monday. And then, uh, Wednesday, we have a budget discussion. The other, next Wednesday, we have the lighting and landscape maintenance deep dive, and then we have a regular council meeting on May first. So that's that, and then I'll be back with all, all of you after all those meetings.
A lot of activity. It's a busy time of year.
It's a very busy year.
Uh, any questions? Thank you.
Friends of the library, communication?
Yeah, um, great volunteer and appreciation event, I thought that was amazing, and I just, I know a lot of our volunteers thought that that was really nice. So I'm excited to hear more about it at our board meeting later next week. Um, I guess, uh, other points, oh, um, you know, made it came to our last meeting and, and we're working on donations and enkinding, kind of, for, uh, the summer reading program. There's a lot of packets that were put together and, um, emails that went out and some surveys, so, you know, I think all of that has really got going, and I know we've gotten some donations already in. People have, on my board at least, have been asking about, hey, how do I get a letter? What is a proper kind of donation ask? So hopefully that, that all just like comes together. Um, I know we did some staff appreciation stuff for the library staff this week, which I know everyone was like super excited. Just a couple of cards, um, I think, uh, that it was, it was especially nice to thank your staff as you thanked all of us volunteers, so that felt really, really nice. Um, and I think that that, oh, and I'm just going to do a little quick plug. Clearly, everyone here really loves the library, and I would just invite everyone to join the Friends of the Library for any amount of money. Um, there is no kind of set obligation, and I think it just really shows some really lovely support. Um, and we do a lovely newsletter, and so if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to give you an envelope and, and answer them, but that's going to be the shameless end. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, um, trustee liaison.
COVID didn't well, so.
Uh, library director, any more communication?
I do have one thing, and I quickly just do want to thank the friends, it's been really sweet. We have all kinds of snacks. I was here really late last night, I had like five. Um, so really sweet, and it does mean a lot to staff, right? I mean, it really does, because they just feel yeah, like you guys have done it for like the last three years, it's been really nice.
Thank you for your feedback, though, giving the people that they want.
Uh, and again, thank you to all of you for, for making the volunteer event so great. Uh, the one thing I wanted to touch on is the, um, comprehensive site planning, uh, project. So with all of the budget-related stuff that's been going on at the city level, it's definitely taken staff away from kind of keeping that moving forward, but it's not, not moving forward, so we, um, we put out a call for the at-large members, um, and we have about fifty-eight applications, but those have not been reviewed yet. Um, we did finalize the four, um, entities that are putting an appointee, uh, we're going to put a plenty on the committee, have all made those selections, we have Bianca. Um, for the friends, they, uh, are, are appointing Kristen to do that. Oh, so I thought that was really great, you know, so I was happy about that. Um, and then, you know, the senior citizens foundation has picked their person and the, uh, community services commission will pick theirs. So, um, next steps are, um, that our, uh, deputy city manager, who is the product manager, is going to be out on leave, so I'm going to step in into that role to cover for her while she's out. Um, so, uh, it looks like we'll be having a meeting next week with the two existing members of the ad hoc committee, which are, um, council member Janet Brown and Mayor Evelyn Smimer, to take a look at those at-large applications and try to get this committee constitute. So once, once those have been reviewed and we know who we want to go back to council and say, you know, here's the makeup of the committee, you know, and have them give us their blessing, um, then we would dive into regularly meeting with that group so that we can start going through those, um, proposals that were received from the consultants. Um, I was looking at those today, not the proposals themselves, but, um, it looks like we have, uh, fourteen proposals, but one of them, uh, did not meet the submission deadline, so they will not be considered. But we have some really good people on the list, and it's very exciting to me. So progress is coming, I think for me, um, I would really like to see a, a webpage dedicated to the project that has context, background information, you know, uh, I would like people who might hear about this happening and who are like, what's going on, to have a place where they can go and have some of those questions answered. So that will be, um, on my list of things to try to accomplish pretty soon. Um, but that's where that is. If anybody, do you have questions about that? I mean, it's definitely taking longer than we would like, but it's, it's, it's happening.
Thank you. Any other questions of Kathy? Okay, with no further items or comments from staff or board members, I will now adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-four PM. For our next meeting on May ninth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven PM. Thanks very much.